I'd like to point out that those of you who are not here in the next slide, that you can send in during the course of the discussion, any questions to the address you see in front of you now, townhall@ucr.edu. Those will be picked up by Jessica and Bree. And towards the end of the discussion at the end, then we'll have a chance to put those questions into play as well. We'll put that website back up towards the end as well, in case you don't get it right now. As you see here on the outline slide, I'd like to talk briefly about leadership transitions and some issues around the general fund budget outlook. A bit about concerns about the learning environment and progress on UCR 2020, and then open it up for a broad discussion on those topics or anything else that is on your mind. As you see, we have three searches underway now. One for the Vice Chancellor for Research, Charles Booney. After six years of service, will be retiring from the university this summer. And so we're at the stage of whittling down to a group of finalists who will be on campus somewhere towards the end of this month or the beginning of next month. So I encourage your participation in visiting with those finalists and making sure your voice is heard as we seek new leadership for that very vital part of our institution. And one of the great parts of our strategic goal is, of course, to increase our research and scholarship activity. And so that's an important search for us. Also, a relatively recent announcement was by Gretchen Bolard, who is also going to retire from the university at the end of the spring. So we're in the early stages of visiting with people, having some analytical work on the best design of that division of the university. And we'll be looking forward to probably a bridging strategy as well as January of 2013, so the Provost will be launching a search for a new university library. And as many of you in this room know, recently, the last camp for our most we've appointed new deans, they're all interim actually, in the Graduate School of Education, School of Business Administration, and in CENAS. And we always sort of pause and stop to thank the outgoing individuals and embrace and welcome and help the new ones become even more successful. Next, I'd like to talk a bit about the general fund, the budget outlook. And if you go to this slide here, you'll see that this, I only stood in front of you one time in my four-year service at the university, to say, you know, it's stable and looks good. So this is a continuing theme, that this is a persistent challenge for higher education in general, and we're working in the other UC campuses. It lacks predictability, which makes planning and commitments on the dollars, we do have very difficult, permanent commitments of dollars. It's easier to do one-time or shorter-term things. It is insufficient, and there's a consequence on the backs of our students and their families that have just studied prices of tuition over the last several years. And it is also not a model that is sustainable, that cannot keep the way this is going. So I'm actually very happy yesterday to learn that many of our students, along with thousands of others, made it to Sacramento. I think a lot of the energy protests is now getting focused on Sacramento as the locus of the decision-making that will affect all of the campuses, not only in the University of California, but across the Cal State and community college system, as well as K-12. And that's where we all are focusing our efforts to try and make sure that we're bringing pressure to bear. And yesterday was a lot of people, a lot of attention is making. I think it's starting to have impact, and I'm very happy to learn about that. There's, of course, the uncertainty at the beginning of the year, what's going to happen in November, with the tax measure on the ballot. I guess I should say tax measure or measures, and there's a lot of politics going on around that right now. But despite of all the persistent challenges, there is some good news. I think we're starting to be able to metaphorically see around the bend, if you will, that the revenues are slightly up and unemployment is slightly down. A year ago, the state shortfall was 26-plus billion, a billion dollars. Now the governor projects it to be nine, and the UCR graduate, the legislative analyst, projects it to be 15. So let's say they're each half-right, and we'll call it 13. There has been, you know, a halving, a halving of the deficit over the last 12 months, and that's good news for us. This four-year agreement that I have up there is really, is a work in progress. It was on the table for quite a period of time, and it got taken off the table. Now it's back on the table. How it's going to look, who knows? Whether it would be adhered to, who knows? But it's the right kind of conversation to be having. Basically, it is a commitment to, not this next year, but in the four years thereafter, to have sort of a block grant increase to UC's budget of around 6% a year. So 6, 6, 6, 6. Add to add up, America is 24, but by compound, it's closer to 30% increase in our base budget over four years, not starting for another year's period of time. And it's going to have some strings attached to accountability since it's time to be green, and so many of the measures that we already use, I think it is fairly public to come out with them and with the public dollars. There's also some opportunity perhaps to approach the way in which we do our capital, our buildings, our facility stuff, free of the state, and do it in a much more cost-effective way, which if that turns out to be an outcome, will actually free up about at one time, about $100 million of the UC's budget. And so there's a lot of things in work. There's a lot of people working very hard at the campus at a system-wide level to try and change the politic of the UC. And I'm a strong advocate of our voices, our student voices, our faculty voices, the staff voices, the community voices, being heard loud and often on this point, about we simply have to reverse this long-term downward degradation trend in order to sustain California's future economy and quality of life. You see it for us, and UC in general, for this year, there was a $100 million cut that was made last year that we're living this year. The good news is by doing some refinancing of debt and a few other maneuvers, unexpected returns on investments, that that entire kit was kept at the office of the president this year and did not trickle down to the campuses. So we've actually had a year so far, so far, where we have not had more money taken away. And looking forward to next year, that same $100 million is there, and we anticipate, now I'll get speculative again, we anticipate that some 80 of that $100 will be handled by this research and debt, and about 20 would come from any new allocation the governor might give to the university. And after that, there will be an actual increase in our budget. Again, work in progress, various, a lot of politics, a lot of dynamics to go. But of course, we're concerned about what happens in November, and if that, if there's a lack of success there, and that either means that the existing tax structure doesn't generate a lot more money very quickly, which is no indication it will, and/or there isn't the agreement by the public for a temporary or permanent increase in tax rates, then there'll be a $200 million trigger that hits the University of California. And for us, we're almost at 8% or 9% of that budget. So any time you see a UC white number, you can do the math, and you can see it's something that is $17 or $18 million hit to our campus. And again, that would reopen a large number of discussions on the backs of our students as well as further cuts. All hypothetical and speculative, but part of my task is to make sure you understand what the whitewater looks like in the next bend of this river. We've done three scenarios of how the budget is going to look for our campus next year. And I don't want to belabor the details. This first one shows for the current year and then for the next two years, some of the major categories in our budget process, the state mandated reductions to cost increases, the temporary teaching and TA adjustments that we've made, and you can read it as well as I. You get down to the fact that, based on the parameters on this first of two slides, you see that we're running about, this year, about a $37 million shortfall. And it actually then becomes, it stays about the same actually over the next two years of predicted. Now, I want to talk and stop and say, what is the best-case scenario? And best is really a word, not in the eyes of our students, but in the eyes of the finance people, in terms of revenue. Best-case scenario, and there's going to be three scenarios I'll present to you, but I'm talking about just the best case number one right now, is that there would be a 5% increase next year for tuition, and the following year, an additional 5% increase. And that $100 million that we've already taken as a cut continues to be permanently handled if the office of the president doesn't trickle down. So it's an optimistic best-case scenario. It also includes money for continuing our faculty burn promotion program. You know, we did a 3% across-the-board pool of adjustments for unrepresented staff this last year. There are represented requirements for our represented staff going forward. It includes all of those sort of salary increases, as well as includes the employee benefit costs, which includes primarily pension, as well as healthcare with the $100 escrow. So the best-case scenario is one where we're looking at about a $35 million a year deficit, obviously not sustainable for us. So how are we managing it? If you see the next slide, the top line is the same as the bottom line of the previous slide. And then there are some reductions that we've taken, and many in this room have felt it, and many who are no longer in this room have felt it, to reduce this shortfall. And then you see that there's a tuition from over a moment line that's in the 22 to 24 million range. I want to be very clear, we have a lot of students on our campus who pay their tuition and fees, and then, and the state also pays the state piece, so there's two sources of revenue supporting all of those students. We have about 2,500 students who pay their tuition and fees, but there's no dollars supported by the state. We call them unfunded students, but they're, you never know which one it is in the room, right? We don't put a U-L on their chest, because when you show up for office, they'll just say, "Get out of here," right? But the tuition, the net tuition for those students generates about $22 million. And so because of that, and because of the cuts, we're able to balance our budget. As you can see, the surplus deficit line at the bottom for this year and the next two years is reasonably balanced. And so that's why the best case actually is one where we stay quite solid, actually. And if some things go our way, even better, we'd be able to do more investments of our resources, so we end up being close to balance. So the next slide shows just the bottom line, the very bottom line, what's the surplus deficit look like over this year and the next two years with the best-case scenario that I just described, that's the wording, green scenario one. Scenario two is the medium case, and scenario three is the worst case. And all I got to say is, there's a lot of red associated in scenario three. That's where there's no change in tuition, and the trigger happens in November, and the office of the president can't help us at all. The whole $100, $100 million currently plus 200 more all hit this campus, and we have no change in tuition, and some assumptions that student numbers stay about the same. That's the worst case you can see, difficult times ahead. So as long as we make our case in the best or medium case, the medium case is tuition only one or two years instead of both years, et cetera. So there's a gradation of scenarios that our finance people have finding out, and of course, we push for the best. And so I think it's the kind of planning for the future that we expect of our administration. Let me move to the learning environment, which I think is something that I'd like us all to think more deeply about, obviously because of its importance and one of our core functions at the university. In addition to our research and creative activity and our engagement throughout outreach, I think there's growing evidence now, that we've been in this difficult time for three years or so, of degradation of the learning environment. And I must both mention and congratulate and thank and cajole, keep going, to the faculty and staff at the University of California Riverside, because without the really heroic efforts that people have made to do more with us, we would have had a much greater degradation of our learning environment for our students. And so even though the numbers will show degradation, I think it's minimalist compared to what would happen if our faculty did stand up and say, "Yeah, I can do a little bit more teaching, or I can do a little more advising of our staff to take on larger workloads." The numbers I'm going to show you are shocking, are absolutely shocking. And that, again, affirms the reason why we want to be in Sacramento every day making our case. And as I think about this institution and its future over the next five to 10 years, this may be our largest challenge. You know, we seek out wonderfully qualified students, but many who are coming from the lower economic sector of the society, and many who are first in their family to go to school. And so those folks need good advice, in addition to having access to classes and built at the right time in their progress to degree, they also need some help on the side, not coddling, not coddling, but rather how you navigate what happens when you stub your toe, which we all do and did as students, how you get back on track. So I'm worried about this, and that's the reason it's referred to as one of the major substances of today's conversation, because I'd like you to worry about it as well. So what about from the staff side, impact on the learning environment? I mean, I just think we all feel this. There was sort of one thing, our best strength is less than it used to be. And in fact, if you look at the number of staff FTE, we're down about 75 permanent folks over the last three years. This includes the career appointments, limited appointments, and contract appointments, and it includes folks who are in the employment category of senior management group, in the management senior professional group, and in the professional support staff group. So you can see the numbers that we've declined by 75 over the course of these three years, and yet the expectation for service is the same, right? And so we have fewer people doing it. And so there are pressure points and frustrations that develop in an organization when you're trying, actually trying to do more, not just stay the same, right? You're trying to be better and do more, and yet we have fewer people. And so this is not a sustainable model for us. If you look at the next slide, you'll see that across the campuses of the University of California, we've done a ratio of the professional and support staff, the PSSs, if you will, to ladder rank teaching faculty. And you'll see that this ratio across the campuses towards Riverside is second from the bottom in terms of that ratio, meaning that we're pretty darn lean, right? Santa Barbara is just a little bit leaner than us, that's because, you know, the capital page and all that kind of stuff, which is common. And I'm tough like Riverside is, you have to put up with traffic and inland temperatures. And you see across the four campuses that are like us, you know, the range, you can read the numbers as well as I. The other campuses all have medical schools, and so the ratios there are a little harder for us to, medical centers, not medical schools, medical centers. And so the ratios there really are not direct comparisons for us. The second slide shows the ratio, the first one, as I said, was PSS. The second one is the management group, the SMGs and the MSPs to ladder faculty. And here you'll see that you see Riverside as the leanest in the system. And the reason that I say this is, I want us to really, we've strategically done, with a major budget cut for the last two years, we have disproportionately affected the administrative side of the campus, and very well, members, and you've seen the details in other town halls or on the website, et cetera. I know we've cut a dollar per percentage point in an academic area, we've cut 2% points in a non-academic area. That leaves us then in a position where we're now really vulnerable. And so if we have to endure further cuts going forward, we're not going to have the same flexibility as we had in the past of protecting more the academic side than the administrative side, because of the fact that we are one deep. And at some point, in addition to just the basic ability of our coworkers to do their job, it's an issue of vulnerability, if you think about finance or transportation or any of the areas where we have people doing things to support our core enterprise of teaching and learning and research and creative activity, we have some exposure. We can't not have an honor, right? We cannot have a lot of divisions. We could, but we wouldn't, I wouldn't last very long. So we've gone from fat to muscle to bone, and if we have any further significant cuts, we're going to start touching some vital organs. And enough is enough. The next slide shows the impact on the learning environment for faculty. And it's a big blue arrow indicates how many students have gone up over the last three years. It did have a 16% increase in students of about, almost 3,900, a little less than that. And yet the overall faculty number has gone down by about 5%. And you can see the numbers of, broken it up by ladder rank faculty, as well as by other instructional faculty. And these are based on filled positions, not on the FTE, and many of the deans have an FTE or two that's not filled, and they're using those dollars as part of a way of coping and cash management during this tough time. There are also some positions held in the provost's office that likewise aren't included here. And again, that cash for those positions is being used to help us get through this tough time. But the simple hydraulic here is more students and fewer faculty. So that means the structural load now increases the ratio of teaching per faculty number. And again, this is where I congratulate the Riverside faculty for understanding the importance of this and stepping up to the plate. Some could say, well, kind of the solution isn't the hydraulics of having people teach more, but rather having fewer students. And theoretically, that's true. But if we were to chop off 2,000 students out of the university, we would lose about $20, $21 million. But our costs would go down by $20 or $20, $20. And so it's not, we're not capable of doing that, nor would we want to, because we have a commitment to creating access to Californians who are qualified and willing to do the work here. It does give you the moment to point out that student interest at the University of California Riverside is up. It's been up in the last couple of years in ways that those of you who have been here a long time have never seen before. We have record applications this last fall. I will tell you, if this upcoming fall right now, applications are up 14% from last fall. So Riverside is doing something right, our faculty, our staff, the beauty of our campus, our graduation rate, so all of the things that people look to as a family to be a student here are making us more and more attractive. The revenue piece is also important, obviously, and one of the things I've had a chance to talk about in different settings, and let me do it here, I think I've done it here before on the international side, if we're able to increase the number of students on this campus who are either international students or out-of-state students, not by displacing California students, not by displacing any other worthy student who comes lives in California, but by growing that sector of our undergraduate population, if we were, and we will be, able to attract 1,000 to 500 new students from outside of California, the dollar equivalent of those students. So there's an educational component to it, adding more perspectives into our student body mix and their processes and lives, and that's a good thing. But just putting on the green visor, those 1,500 students appetiting off financial aid would generate $35 million a year, here in and here out of this campus. And Provost and I agree that, other than the cost of bringing those students here, some recruiting efforts and things of that nature, we'd like to turn all of those dollars back into the main learning environment, to help ameliorate some of the changes that we're talking about here, is the degradation of the learning environment. So let me bang through a couple of data slides on the learning environment, to say, we're talking about the people, staff and the faculty and the students. Let's talk a little bit about the end result. Here you see the lecture, average class size over the last four years in the fall term. The blues indicate lower-division courses, and the reds indicate upper-division courses. You'll see that the average class size from 2008 to 2011, that the lower division has gone from 66 or so to 87 or so. And you can see the same general trend at the upper division. The next slide picks, it's hard to read, but let's just pick, there's a bunch of different sort of gateway classes here, physics and chemistry and biology and anthropology. Let's pick, let's pick, let's pick the top one, because I can read it. No, it's, actually, the top one is, has a very unusually small number of people. Let's go to chemistry, 1A. You see in 1A, there was 287 students in class, and you can see that that has grown now from this last fall to 543. So some of these large gateway classes have become much larger. Now, in and of itself, that's not bad, it seems to me, that, you know, what's the difference if you're a professor lecturing 200 versus 500, in the actual 15 minutes together? It's probably not a lot of difference, because there wasn't a lot of interaction with 200. Certainly not here in a lot of interaction with 500. But you would expect if you had a larger class that we'd have more discussion sections, the smaller discussion sections, so the students could have the benefit of the large lecture and have a chance to discuss it with their teaching assistant, et cetera. But what you will see in the next slide is the fact that, this is now the, it's hard to read, I realize it's a small slide, but just look at the general trends. This is over the same years, the size of the discussion sections. In the upper panel is biology, in the lower panel is chemistry, the same one we're just talking about. You see that the number of students in a discussion section have gone up over these three or four. So while the lecture has gotten bigger, so has the size of the discussion sections. And then the lines at the top indicate the number of discussion sections available. And you see particularly in this, in this last year, a precipitous decline in the number of sessions. So this is very, very troubling, very, very troubling data, and something that we simply have to reverse in order to have long-term success. The next slide shows advising in CENAS. And this is the extreme example on campus, but it is illustrative of the specific issues of CHAS and engineering and business as well as education. So what this shows is in the green, the life sciences students, and the black or gray, the math and physical sciences students, and in the red, the undeclared. And the number, the height of the histogram indicates the number, the ratio of students per advisor. So for example, in our life sciences, we have one advisor for 511 students. Give me a break. And you can see for the physical and math, it's 575, and for the undeclared, the most adrift students in CENAS is 755. The lines indicate the national standard for the field, so it's 300 to 1 in the life of physical sciences, and it's 200 to 1 for the yet-to-declare majors in CENAS. So we are horribly under staff in advisory, and as a consequence, students not having as easy access to how they navigate getting through their curriculum in real time, or if they stub their toe and need some quick advice, how they deal with the advice. And finally, on the learning environment, let me just put up one slide, I won't spend much time on it, it's about our, it's about our learning communities, which have been so enormously successful in colleges. And what this slide shows, you don't have to worry the data, you can study it later if you're interested, over the last three, actually, over 2006, '07, and '09, I don't know why you stopped on there, but you'll see that the increase in retention, first-year retention from freshmen to sophomore, has gone up because of the students engaged in learning environments, learning communities, which are more of a cohort model. They go through that first year with students they know, with faculty they know. It's had a profound difference on the retention rate of our students, and if you disaggregate the data, you'll see that those, some who come from a lack of opportunity and pass the benefit for most by these learning communities. The learning communities have steadily grown over the last several years, but this year, they may be cut. I don't have the data, but I've been told by those who keep track of this stuff, that they may be cut by somewhere 30, 40, maybe even 50% because of the budget. So then that means, this is one of our great advantages that we crow about, I crow about all the time, our learning communities, if we start disestablishing them, we're going to have more students dropping out, just bad for business. I mean, it takes a lot of money to recruit yet to do here, and it's bad for education that has started and failed, and it's obviously bad for their families and for the student herself, if they're not able to succeed at UCR. So I'm concerned, I'm heavily concerned about our learning environment, so many different dimensions, and we're starting to see data that indicates that it's just not the chance for our to bring this hands, for no other reason, that there's a lot of facts saying we're moving in the wrong direction here. for no other reason, but there's a lot of facts saying we're moving in the wrong direction here. So what are some possible solutions? And I put question marks here because there are no decisions yet, but there are a lot of discussions. My encouragement to us is to get serious about this sooner rather than later. Let me just run through them, and maybe we can discuss some of them, or you can add to the list either today or some other time. But can we increase the selectivity of our students and maintain our diversity? This may require, as CNAS did this last year, raised the cut score to get in a CNAS within faculty who are engaged in college students, undergraduate students, in high schools, and say, hey, this is the program for you, it made a huge difference. We have higher academic students coming in, and perhaps some of these support groups can be less. Can we use a ICLB better for advising or for instruction itself? I know this is a bad metaphor, but you know, if you go to Southwest Airlines' website, and it's 1, 2, 3, 4, where do you want to go? 1, type it in. 2, when do you want to do it? 3, here's your choices. And 4, let's go. Or you can go up to the website and today have a flight and change your flight. Find another seat available in class, right? How come Southwest can do it? Can you imagine if our students had a little Southland? UCR had an card and spiked somewhere and said, okay, you're an English major. Oh, I see you need to take English 4. It's going to have to be offered next week, and there's three places left if you want to press the button. What's the key about peanuts and these things? We actually have a very old, 25-some-year technology that helps us do this piece of admissions and class availability. We absolutely have to do something about that. It has been Rube Goldberg to death. And there's a lot of more contemporary things that allow students better access to their own data and take perhaps some of the pressure off of the professional staff. What about limiting financial aid? This would be horribly unpopular concept, but let me just explain. Right now, we do the federal limit. That is, it takes 120 credits to graduate from the University of California. If you do full load, it'll save, and then that's 12 quarters, right? Three times four is 12. We will allow, we will provide financial aid up to 18 quarters. 12 required to graduate if you do all your classes on time. We'll provide it up to 18. Like, there's a lot of flexibility, though. You give somebody the chance to stay in school and try different things on, and some of that's good. Or they stub their toe to make up something, and some of that's good. But what if we move that limit down to some other number? We need to do the analyticals of what I'm talking about. Well, that would do, first of all, it would free up millions of dollars in financial aid to give to somebody else. Secondly, it would get students through quicker, therefore, seats available sooner, therefore, other students can get in or their class quicker. So I think there's something there. I was just talking to some folks at one of the Cal State campuses who don't do it by terms of enrollment, do it by student credit hours. And they used to allow students to do about 50% more student credit hours, and then they cut off financial aid. And they cut it way back down, and their budget is about 1, about 20% of our budget. They're standing somewhere between $6 to $8 million a year in financial aid, plus the course availability for other students. So there's something there that somebody smarter than me needs to analyze. And we communicate, nobody gets surprised, no gotchas, but I think it might be a way to help. Can we redesign majors to fewer credits? And that may be possible in some areas, it should be possible in some areas. Others that have experimental accreditation is more difficult. Perhaps, you know, if engineers, it's all coming together across the country, to tell the engineering credit group, enough is enough. They don't need three classes that actually can get by with one good one. We may be able to redesign to fewer credits. And again, that creates some more capacitance and compliance in the system. The next slide is, should we create a lower-division college? They don't come in the major college with a lower-division college. Or should we have a campus-wide rather than a college or school-wide, undeclared major? What support can we give to keep people in their major of choice so they can be successful rather than migrating into other areas, either prematurely or not because of their choice? The learning communities, the peer counseling for academic credit. There's things that we could do a little bit more here and a little less there, and in aggregate, have a profound impact on the learning environment. But can we, should we put in place some transition counselors for those who leave College X and moving into College Y? I've heard a lot of discussion among our students and around our associate deans and deans about this sort of valley of microtory undeclared, that nobody loves them. They step out of one place, and the other place isn't ready to take them for their honor in this valley by themselves. Is there a role to ask our AmeriLife faculty to come and help with advising? And give them a cup of coffee and a partner for them? You know, is there a way to grow non-state resources? And the answer is yes, if there's international enrollment, which would allow us to bring in more both instructional faculty as well as the support faculty. So I've asked, you know, in my cabinet, and asked, and Dallas is working with the deans, and I've had wonderful conversations with Mary Mulvaney. I think we all own this problem. We all own this problem. We all have to come together and find solutions. And the solution isn't going to be more money raining out of Sacramento anytime soon. And so, that's why I think some of these policy changes, innovations just have to occur sooner rather than later in order to not have that learning environment degrade much further. Well, let me finish by running through just a couple of things of progress on our strategic plan. You'll see, I touched just briefly on various sub-goals within our strategic goal number one, which is academic excellence. But first, if you look at this next slide, you will see that, where we start. There should be one just right after, back it up, like that. This is the most recent NRC data. And it was published in 2011, but we all know it goes back to the end, it was collected several years before that. And what this slide shows is the 10 campuses. And how many programs in the darkest bar were ranked by the NRC in the top 10%? And if you recall, the NRC, they had two different sort of parallel rankings going on. One was reputational, who do you think is great in forestry? People could check, you know, Oregon State, and they don't have a forestry department anymore. And the other one was more database about grants and the impact of the papers and placement of graduate students, and more database. And so, this is the database rankings. So let's pick the flagship of the system. Berkeley had 32 programs in the top 10%. They had another 12 programs in the, between 11 and 20%. 12 more, 20 to 50%, and then two from 51 to 100%. So if you look where we stand, you know, in terms of overall programs in the top 100, we're really better than UC San Diego. So it's funny, we write the sociology department, we thought that we should be abolished a year or two ago. With this data, I'd be grateful. And you look at, and we're in striking distance of Santa Barbara and not too far behind Irvine in terms of programs in the top 100. We are one of the lower ones, just like Irvine, however, and those in the top 10, and so forth. And so, one of our goals, I think, is to try and move some of these programs here to the left on this slide, to move them up in the percentile rankings by investing in the programs that are already pretty damn good. And in so doing then, we will be raising our profile across the nation, across the world academically. So we're actually starting in a reasonably, you know, reasonably good place. Next slide. So how are we doing on funding? This was goal number one. And if you compare, so far, the first six months of this year, we've raised, our faculty have received awards, extra annual funding of $66 million. This is about $10 million higher than the same time last year. And about equal to the same time the year before. But the year before was the R of the year, but there's a lot of extra federal dollars out there. And the NSF and NIH budgets were some 25 to 30% bigger than they are today. So I agree, this is that we're doing well on our extra annual funding. We're moving in the right, we're trending in the right direction. And we've had seven faculty who received awards recently that are over $1 million. So I think we all congratulate Alex and Jimmy and Jim and Ken, Howard and Roland and Phil, who have all done very well and getting nice awards. Another goal that we made progress on, at least we're making progress on, interdisciplinary centers. And there's an interesting conversation that has emerged in the last four or five months with the Blom Center leadership on the idea of global diversity. And it's a program established at Berkeley, but everybody would like to have Riverside as part of that thing, along with UCED and Santa Barbara and a few other campuses. You know, global poverty isn't somewhere outside the shores of the United States. Global poverty is in Coachella Valley, it's in parts of Riverside. And so, are there, there are both curricular issues and research issues that being part of the Blom Center might create for our faculty and students? In fact, the largest minor on the Berkeley campus now is a minor in global poverty. And they have 55 different majors all having that minor, chemistry to English to business, all part of the minor in global poverty. It's an issue that our students are particularly interested in. Goal 1.3 was organizing, thinking about how to design. And I always believe that form follows function. And so, there is conversations at preliminary stage that will move forward about CNAS, the complex and large college on campus. And the Provost has appointed recently a task force to establish an honors college. And imagine an honors college, that a student can get an undergraduate degree in three years instead of four, by going a year round, including a year abroad or a half a year abroad. Think of an honors college where maybe it's a five-year program to get both a bachelor's and a master's degree. And something that would attract the very best students, that everybody would love to work with, and something that would allow their families to say, gosh, they can get through quicker than if they, you know, it would be a big, it would be a big hook for the University of California. Advancing students as freshmen, these are the really talented students getting involved in research and being in their laboratory or their studio for four years rather than just one or two, into that. Next is how are we doing on hiring? And this is the list of searches underway in the academic schools and colleges. And you'll see that despite the times that we're in, that we're looking for 47 new faculty to join us, which will likely be a net increase in faculty for the first time in a while. I think they have retirements somewhere in the 20 to 30 range, they can tease this until they happen. But I think this will actually reverse the trend of having a lost faculty now for a little bit. And there's several interesting points here. I asked the deans about what they were trying to do, and I'll strategically relate it to the 2020 plan. And in engineering, they had 1,200 applicants for their 10 positions. And the dean and many others seem to be the best applicants they've ever seen since their time upon this campus. And they are looking at their college's strategic areas that overlap and dovetail and support the institution's strategic directions. So things in bioengineering, environmental engineering, science engineering, electrical and mechanical, all the areas that they're searching. In CHAZ, again, the way in which they decided where its search was going to take, and I really appreciate Steve Pomeroy's assessment here, is that they wanted to invest in excellent departments in CHAZ who today have strong graduate programs. And remember, our strategic intent is to grow our graduate programs more than our undergraduate programs. And so, they've done, they've had some success so far. They've got 12 searches, they've made an agreement with Robert Hernandez, who's going to come to us from Maryland, Chikantle, LaTingla, and Turati to the critical mass and youth department. Elizabeth Davis is coming from Irvine, Developmental Psychology. Victor Ortega Marti is coming from the London School of Economics, the area of macroeconomics. Those are all areas of strategic excellence in CHAZ. Marilyn Yates is searching for 13, which includes 12 latter and one person in cooperative extension and her negotiation with a lot of very talented people, no post landed yet. But they have two extremely impressive candidates, one in the marine biology and another in materials chemistry. Doug Mitchell in education, they're searching for two latter faculties, very responsible in education, to the strategic goals of academic excellence and community engagement. And so, these folks are going to be in the areas of higher education and school psychology. And not only do they have a wonderful natural laboratory, but they're wonderful ambassadors for the university and the larger community. And GSOE is a strategic intent, really is very supportive of many areas of the overall university strategic plan. And I think it's the next month or so that these candidates will all be coming to campus. So a lot of searches going on out there. You know, Zane in the School of Business Administration is looking for about seven people, of which five are latter faculty and two are lecturers. And one of those lectures might become a latter faculty, depending on their qualifications. They're working in areas, again, came from the school, embedded against strategic climate institutions. Accreditation is an important issue in business. But they've got wonderful candidates from MIT, University of Pennsylvania, and Berkeley, Michigan. So we expect success there. Finally, in the biomedical sciences program slash school of medicine, there's four faculty underway right now, all with a theme of mind and life, which is the project, for the school of medicine, with areas such as cancer, infectious diseases, neurological diseases, cardiovascular and metabolic diseases. And also, somebody in the area of population-based outcomes. And that may be either a clinical appointment or a latter line, depending on the candidate pool there. But there's a lot of interest in those hires, as you can imagine. Goal 6 is about professional schools. And one of my great statuses is that we've not made progress, simply because of finances on the school policy, which was approved a few years ago by the Regents. And we will get to that, and this Blom Center may not become sort of the Kickstarter, I think the Kickstarter to get is moving in that direction again. The school of medicine is making progress, lots of partners, lots of participants here from the county to the students themselves and everybody in between. The state has been our council partner so far. But we have come up with a burgeoning strategy, really, that has both funding as well as a financing mechanism that allows us to go through the accreditation process again. And depending on the outcome there, we might be in a position to default, announce it even a year later. I know a lot of you have read the governor's headlines in the local paper. They said the governor won't fund that school. Damn, I wish we had a different headline letter, because I think that doesn't characterize exactly what he said. He said, "Not right now, not right now." And that's not a surprise for a governor, because think about it. He is like a laser right now, a political capitalist of wanting his action to succeed in the world. So he's trying to clear the field, get rid of the two or three others that are cluttering it up from his perspective. And so, there's a lot of work there. If he were to stand up and say, you know, we want to invest in something new, that would undercut his political ability to say, no, we need a successful vote, we need to put the good measures off the ballot. So the governor's playing hardball politics. So while I understand what he said and why he said it, at the end of the day, at some point, sooner rather than later, it's a little fun on that level. Another part of our strategic plan is access to new degree programs just approved in the last month, a master's of professional accounting. First class will be September of this fall. It's only offered by Riverside and Davis. And it meets the increased requirements for CPAs. There's some 300,000 jobs there that need this degree. And so, we expect that to be a way in which the school of business can start generating a lot of revenue, internal revenue, in order to help create even more programs in that school. Bioengineering, our first online program, the Masters of Bioengineering. It's the same course, but it's a campus-based program, but it combines both engineering, professional development, and so it's a broken professional. And then, just last evening, we got word that the final signature for the computer engineering masters was approved and focuses on construction, designing construction, computing structures, hardware and software. And it'll help me to demand one of the fastest-growing employment areas in the state of California. Access and diversity goals. We've, Radheshankar Cardul have SPIs, have granted a $3.9, almost $4 million grant over four years to for scanning for the institution pipeline. So this is helping reaching out to students in high school and middle schools, as well as early students here, to help have them be competitive in the STEM fields. And a whole group led by Yolanda Moses have been successful in creating an NSF grant for women faculty in the STEM fields. Because of the, these four women, if you add their parts together, you get the sum greater than the parts. They decide it's normal support under They decided to normally support underrepresented women in STEM fields, but all women faculty in all of the fields. And so there's a lot of excitement about that program that will help recruit, retain and support women faculty at the university. On community engagement, you'll see that Washington Monthly in October ranked us, not number two, not number 10, number one in the nation for community service, one of the search disappearances. And we were, for the first time, on the president's Higher Education Community Service Honor Roll. At Washington Monthly ranked, you know, disaggregated their analysis based on service or impact of research or student mobility, you know, how fast and where students go based on what you predict based on their high school records. And if you aggregate all the stuff together, we're number one in service, but in aggregate, we were number five in the country. And you'll be happy to know that Harvard was number six, and Stanford was number four. So there's a couple bookends on either side of this, and we're very proud of that achievement and the good work by so many, many people in the student affairs and in the academic side of the house. So that summarizes what I wanted to touch on, the leadership, the budget, the fact that we are making good progress on UCR 2020 despite the tough environment. Very important to recognize that that document is seen every day in my office and the provost's office and in the dean's offices. And as you think about, you're contributing to, should dust that puppy off with Earl website, look at it again, it's a really good document that is providing guidance. In the research office where we're searching, there's for somebody to come in behind Charles, there's a lot of information about people would like in the research office and all the candidates have access to that. So I think, I think that a lot of time, I don't know that is really paying dividends. Can you imagine if we were in a good economy, where we would be? But I don't worry about where we're not, I worry about and applaud each of you for where we are. So let's turn it over to a discussion. I didn't mean to talk. And there's microphones, simply so people, you can turn around and pick the camera if you want, or you can talk to me either way. But just announce, just identify who you are so people at home can, or in the office can see who's talking.
My name is John Gus. I'm a grad student in anthropology as well as a unit chair for the TA local here. And one, I have just a couple comments, and then I have a question to end. I will say, you know, like, the good chancellor and other people are continually trying to focus us on Sacramento. As long as we have things going on in our campus like this.
What is that?
The police presence and Jenny Mackey. As long as student affairs is trying to limit free speech of students, as long as we have people having essentially fire extinguisher-sized camp of pepper spray sprayed in their eyes, there will be focus on the leadership of this campus, the leadership of other campuses as well as you know. I mean, I think you need to understand that. As long as senior managers are being either given raises or positions being backfilled at higher salaries, there will be a legitimate focus on the leadership of this university. I would like to know how many students could be taught, how many new classes could be opened with just the people that are being paid right now to not run a medical school? But going on with some of this other stuff, I would like to say that I still have credit advisory on my credit cards from, you know, the work of the IT department. So I don't know that that's necessarily a great place to go with some of this stuff. But you talk about limiting financial aid, and the problem with that is that there are students right now who are queuing up for classes they need. And if you limit their financial aid, those people are going to be pushed out of the university. So it is a real chicken or egg kind of situation here in which you have to actually have the classes that you need to get into, or you wind up taking place over their classes. You know, yes, I'm coming from a liberal arts background, I really think that people should try out a couple of things. But students are not necessarily trying out a couple of things because they want to. They're trying to get into three or four classes in order to keep their financial aid, in order to be able to keep themselves in the university. And that brings me to my question, is how do you take a minority student, I ask the vice provost this as well, how do you take a minority student or first-generation student who is in these giant classes, like, and specifically, what steps should they go through in order to, one, learn how to go to college if no one in their family ever has? And two, if they are able to stick around long enough, and this is for all students, if they are able to stick around long enough that they're a hundred-division student, how did they know a professor well enough with the enrollments that you were talking about? Did they manage to get a legitimate and real recommendation letter for graduate school?
Well, John, you raised several very important points, so can I just try them all on?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay. So first of all, I welcome the accountability of myself and the vice chancellors and the deans and the department chairs, and I do love them. I have a couple slides on January 19th, if you could put them up. There was obviously a lot of conversation about the second-day at Regents meeting on campus. And one of the things that I feel that I could have done better was to advance the meeting, communicated to campus to anticipate a lot of police officers on campus. And that there would be... That there would be areas of the campus that are closed off. You know, I remember when I became chancellor, I actually got introduced to the Regents. It's nice, but I think you can see, so you can go over there. There's only six slides, and I won't turn them over. Thanks. When I walked in to the Regents meeting at UCLA, I was stunned by how many police officers were there. I commented to my wife, I said, "What is this all about? I thought we were being welcomed, you know?" And as it turns out, every Regents meeting, my word is, there's a lot of police officers there, and that's based on the experience that's happening at Regents meetings in this time. So I feel probably not royally disseminating ahead of that was going to happen. So I think, I go back to my own shock of seeing it personally many years ago, in 2008, and just extrapolating that in a group, a group meeting last evening with the students came up for there as well. That being said, I have, there was a lot of very positive protest here. This is the, between the hub and Costco signs, a lot of energy, a lot of noise, and police at the top, because that was the place where entrance to the building, that was sort of the door to the building. If you got past there, you could get in. And so they sealed it off because the Regents closed the meeting because of the meeting had gotten disrupted inside. But this is, I would call this a good image of a peaceful, important protest, and you can read some of the signs. The next slide, slide is on the backside of the hub. And again, you can see, that's an entrance way into a building, it's where the Regents came and were to leave from the building. There's also a lot of food service workers in behind that loading dock area. So again, sort of meaning the gate closed, the doors were closed across that line. And this crowd reflects to me peaceful, focused, and appropriate freedom of speech, appropriate anger about what's happening with financial aid, the situation and so forth. The next slide, again, shows an example of freedom of speech, where there are individuals who have very strong negative demonized police officers, it's based on their sign, and are expressing their views based on their handsake. That's all protected speech, and it's perfectly acceptable. The next slide.
If it's acceptable, why did they shoot at us and hit us with batons? We're sitting there peacefully. And why do you condone it?
Because of this slide and the next three. So there was all peaceful, but there were also plenty of violence. Now, this is a sign, which if you saw the other side, would say something about stop tuition hikes, or there were several historic books about struggles in other societies, great books, and you were cleverly making. If you look at it closely, you'll see that it is wood veneer on either side, and styrofoam in the middle all taped together, so it's a sandwich wood. It's not heavy, but it's very rigid. The corners are very sharp. And in the back then, are handles, which professors will hold that, hold that board. And so to hold it and to express a message is perfectly okay. But here you see it being shoved into the chest of Vice President Scobal, who is the Vice President for Economic Affairs for the entire UC system. He's a gentleman in his 60s. I recall that crossing along. There were rules about not allowing masks across all UC campuses. Yet many people are masked, which prevented us then from having a conversation with that person about the salted Jack Scobal. The next slide, and on his backup, oh, this is a good one, you can see the, go back to, I'm sorry, just go to the next man. Right there. So the other thing about these boards, is if you look at that corner and imagine that being turned to push against somebody or to hit somebody, you know, that is not something that is tolerable. And places like Occupy Oakland and so forth banned these lines, and they saw these signs that were confiscated from individuals. Now here's another example, where there were three senior officers of the university, the provost, Larry Pitts, the vice president, Jack Scobal, and another vice president, Marie Briggisman, who were walking out of the meeting towards its end, and we decided to shuttle them in university pickup trucks to their cars, which were parked out in satellite parking. Those three pickup trucks, and you can see two of them here, were surrounded by protesters. And for some 40 to 50 minutes, those individuals were held against their will, along with our employees who were driving them. Two of those vehicles were jumped on, decked it, rear rear ripped off, and there was a traffic break, and tried to push them on. So we needed to bring out police officers to encircle the vehicles to protect the occupants who were held against their will. I believe that is violence.
If you use them as bait.
The next slide.
There's some slides that was getting shot at while we're sitting down. Find those slides, they're everywhere on the internet.
The next two slides show the use of these metal fences that were indicated, that were put up to sort of indicate where entrances and exits were, to keep crowd control under control. They were broken apart, and they were all strapped together, the straps were broken. And there's a two-slide sequence here that I'd like to, to indicate. So here they are, moving this barrier and this barrier. Now, and you see a line of county officers coming in to report to duty. The next slide shows how those two barriers came together to screech the officer. So again, I would view that as violence. And so as a consequence.
If I'm walking into the crowd.
Well, if you look at replacement back of the ones, yes? I think there's actually some movement of those metal benches, it may just be optical illusion, but if you look at this one, and then look at the next one, you think you'll see that it wasn't just scattered. So my point is that in a protest, there is 99% of it is nonviolent. And I was so proud of our students, so proud of our faculty and staff who engaged in a nonviolent way. But for those who say that there wasn't any violence, simply does not comport with the facts. Yeah, the lights back on. John, you asked a question, you asked a question about financial aid and classes, and I think you're right, it's a delicate calculus. That when we save money on financial aid to create more classes that allow students to get to degrees sooner, that's the calculation that has to happen. I'm not suggesting you cut financial aid just to cut financial aid to be dispirited, but rather to see whether we are able to decrease the amount of time we provide appropriate financial aid to get students to degrees sooner, because we can redirect some of those dollars to support the academician. The analysis hasn't been done, the analysis of government will be out for public debate before any decision is made. It's just one of many ideas. And I forget, what was your last question?
Mike, actually, just go walk us through the process in which you, if you are a first-generation student at this Hispanic-serving institution, but a lot of people like me are first-generation who aren't Hispanic, or Latino, because the word Hispanic sucks. But, or, you know, how do you get through that first couple of years if you don't know how to go to college? And second, how do you ever know a professor well enough that you can get a decent letter of recommendation for graduate school?
Well, many do, but many don't. And so there's a summer orientation program that goes on for about a week or so, which is from students.
It's not for over a month.
We identify, we know what the first gen students are. We love them, we like the learning communities a lot, the first gen students. They, so they get support, they're told how to navigate. Some of the, you know, the fobus students, some of them found that to be very helpful, others did not. The reason that I'm so concerned about our learning environment, it's the very same reasons you are. These classes get bigger, discussion sections get fewer, the chance of personal contact becomes less and less, and that's moving in the wrong direction. So that's why we're so intent on finding both new ways of delivering education, but also finding new resources. I think that counselors, the academic advisors, the faculty and staff themselves often will reach out to students. We encourage that people work study jobs, which creates a little bit of money, but it also creates sort of a place for them to come to this literature, chemistry, test meetings, a lot of different ways, every student is, not all do. And I share with you the angst about the degradation in the learning environment, and it becomes tougher and tougher and tougher. And Joe is here, Joe, you want to talk to children, your idea of this graduate division, a little bit about sort of preparing students for graduate school and the kind of efforts that are underway and create opportunities for students to learn about that? Joe, your points are right on, right on target.
I would note though, real quickly, that you talked about basically evaluating migrating undeclareds. If you didn't compare students implicitly to hurt animals, that might, like, if you reoriented the way you think, that may, that may be another way to look at it.
John, you know, human populations since the beginning of time have migrated from one place to another. It's not an animal, it's not a pejorative term. If you want to quote a lot, Sandy, you can do it afterwards, it's not a waste of everybody's time. I'm going to have Joe talk a little bit about that. A important transition from undergraduate to graduate to professional programs.
And one of the things that we've been focusing on in the graduate division over the last two or three years is finding ways to make sure that graduate students that come in, especially those students who are identified in our diversity pool and also are first-generation, have often, often to succeed. So one of the things we began to think about was the ways in which there's been a lot of investment and a lot of attention on first-year success programs for undergraduates, but there wasn't a concomitant kind of program for graduate students. So we began to seek out external funding and actually found some that allowed us to put together a mentorship program for exactly this kind of students. Now, what you may or may not know is that the average attrition rate of graduate students who leave graduate school before they reach their degree objective nationally is about 50%, about half the year. On our own campus, unfortunately, we're very near that at 47%, which means there's about a 10% attrition rate every year. What we've found with our mentorship program, which now is entering its third year, is our attrition rate's about 1% a year, from the very highest risk students. So we're taking this very seriously, we're trying to expand this, so it's not just available to students who fall into these grant categories that are determined by national funding, but also that we can expand it out to make it available to all graduate students.
It's a wonderful, wonderful program, unmitigated, absolutely no, no critique about it all. But I was talking about how to get into graduate school, not what you are here.
Okay. Let me see. So there's some questions on the outside I'd like to use. One came with respect to offering a system-wide phased retirement program, if there's been any plans for UCR to do that. And JD Lee is here. Let me say that I know that program has been discussed, where's JD? JD, would you mind coming up and answering this? But there was discussion in the operations council across the campus about that, and I'll let JD tell you a little bit about what that led to or didn't lead to.
She simply has every system of interests to it, she may have.
Actually, Cynthia Sander, she may have some comments to add. But there was a system-wide phased retirement program that I think initially came from San Diego. It was finally approved by the system, maybe towards the end of 2011, and it was up to individual locations, whether they chose to adopt it or not. So far, three campuses have done so. And the way the program works is that it allows people to gradually reduce that percentage of employment, together with a commitment to retire by a date certain. On our campus, the operations council took a look at it and initially concluded that because we are so thinly staffed, that if employees were to reduce that percentage of employment, that would create challenges because we did not have staff to fill behind them and pick up the slack. And so at this point, the program has not been extended to our campus.
Thank you, Judy. There's another question that came in, it's very important actually, about reading the news reports that it's less expensive to go to Harvard than one of the Cal State universities. It was in the Country Times yesterday or the day before. What they did is they looked at the cost of going to school minus the financial aid, and said it was less expensive to go to Harvard than Edwards and Cal State. Pretty, you know, pretty headline, obviously being a lot of attention. So the question here is, that our strategic plan is based on sort of the traditional paradigm of universities, and how are we going to actually lower the cost of delivery if we stay in sort of the traditional model, or will there be any innovations in this thing and be more open and greener? I think it's a very fair question. I think more of the ways, UC is, we're all in it, unless you've been in other types of institutions for a period of time, you may not really understand and feel how different it is here. There is, certainly I think you can use technology to a greater extent in some type of classes and some types of programs. But there's so much of what happens at the University of California in creative writing, for example, or in political theory, or in religious studies, or ethnic studies, where the discussion and the points of views of the students and varying people with varying backgrounds and experiences really change the way that you do the coaching and learning. That's going to be very hard to do by computer. But if there are ways in which we could do basic mathematics, or the basics of organic chemistry, or basics biology, that way, I know the system has some marquee gateway courses in human works that would be eligible to anybody at the UC. So I think there will be some ways often to reduce the cost of delivery by using a bit of technology. Are there other ways? Let's have the examples come forward. But I would hate for us to lose what is so distinctive about the University of California, and that is to be able to touch students in formal and informal learning environments in classes and disciplines that cover across the wide spectrum. And that's going to be expensive to deliver, because we want to have the world's best faculty, not just teaching people to create knowledge. And there's a market out there. And if we're going to have the best faculty, we have the best staff.